Well, hello. Nice to see all of you today. It's upcoming this week or next week on Wednesday at 6:00 in the evening at the Convention Center. There'll be the first public hearing on the proposed record tax increases and fee increases and new taxes that the city manager is recommending. I say he's recommending that with probably the foreknowledge and support of at least the majority of council members, or he wouldn't be recommending all these tax increases and fee increases and hoping to retain his $300,000 plus salary. But I think it's important because I know many people are busy taking care of elder parents. They're busy trying to get their kids home from school, get homework started, traffic, cook dinner, get their kids before they have to pay extra fees at the childcare center. So I'm sure first on your mind isn't studying the $200 million increase going from 2.6 to $2.8 billion budget. But you will be quite aware of it when the monthly bills start going up at your home. And like most families, there's no free cash flow. So paying those extra fees and higher taxes means you have to further reduce your own standard of living. And I think that's wrong. I share, I appeared last Saturday and you can watch this YouTube on the Virginia Beach Taiwan Liberty Partners website and YouTube. I appeared with council member Stacy Cummings of the 9th District. I share his belief that what we need is a budget that starts off with the premise of restricting the revenues available, rather than then deciding how much you want to spend and then decide how much more revenue you need to confiscate from taxpayers. So we got the wrong approach to the budget today. I share his position that he espoused at that Saturday morning breakfast, that he was against the boat tax, I am too. He's against increasing the meal tax. Well, I think we can go lower on the real estate tax than the increase being proposed by the manager. And I'll talk about that in a bit. But he certainly thought that it would be easy to get to 95 cents, which would still be an increase of about 3 cents. But I think we can get to 90 cents and if we really worked hard, 85 cents could be possible. What I'd like to do is to, if you, later, when you're watching this, you might decide to pause it and go to the Virginia Beach website and click on, it's on the front page, the cities, they call it the Resource Management Plan Budget, and go to the hyperlink to the executive summary. And you could follow along with me because I'm going to go page by page and just excerpts and provide a little bit of commentary to do the homework that many of you reasonably don't have the time to do. And in all fairness, they're hoping no one shows up. They really are hoping that people are too busy because they prefer that people, really despite all the claims of transparency, that people basically are, have no knowledge of what's happening until it's too late. So I'd like to start off on page nine, there's a lot of fluff at the front. On page nine is where his letter starts to members of council. And he says that he's basing his recommendation on direction from city council. But as Stacy Cummings pointed out last Saturday, council as a body never provided any direction, meaning they never had a vote. They never had a resolution like Congress passes. What you really have is 11 individual council members had individual discussions with the city manager and his budget director. And they made individual commentary at very informal meetings of workshops of city council. But city council as a body never provided any direction. But this is the direction that the city manager deduced that at least six members of city council probably agree with. That they need provide tax diversification options, which means new things to tax. Not, not how can we do tax rebates, but how can we tax more things? Provide an update on the feasibility of developing the inter-facility traffic area, which means taxpayer subsidies that may never pay off. Conduct a market salary survey, we'll talk about that. Attempt to fund additional 30 firefighters. And find the resources to annually continue the parks after dark program at three locations. What you didn't see anywhere here is any concern about making sure that what? The city's budget was affordable, affordable to the residents who most of all have no free cash flow at the end of the month and are much in need of tax relief, which the federal government has recognized, which our governor has recognized, but which obviously a majority of the city council does not recognize. Going on to page 10. He talks about the impact on the revenues that the city doesn't collect because of the various tax relief programs that were passed by the constitutional amendments for people who die in the line of duty, for people who are disabled veterans. And he talks about that debt is going to grow to $35 million a year of taxable property for which the city receives no revenue. Well, my point is, that's not a surprise. That was voted on by the voters. So if it's a constitutional provision, the property is not taxable to start with. So how can you lose something you were never entitled to? So they shouldn't be complaining and whining about something the voters approved. They should accept that and downsize their expenses to the new reality. And that gets back to one of the comments that the mayor had made. Well, the city is experiencing confrontation with reality. No, the city is not experiencing confrontation with reality because they're passing on the cost of not adapting to reality to us in the form of tax increases. You can't go to your boss and say, because my taxes went up, or price of eggs went up, or the price of fuel went up, I need to get a raise. But what we're hearing is not that the city has experienced a confrontation with reality, but they're passing on their addiction to our income. They don't want to change and they're passing the bill on to us. So I think that's just a bogus wine in my opinion. Now, how many, right now in America, the average age of a vehicle on the road is at a record. I think it's approaching 13 years of age. And I sure, if you drive around the city, I don't see any 13-year-old vehicles out there. But the city says that they need to spend an additional $1.5 million next year over what they've been spending from 4.4 million to reflect the cost increases of vehicles. Because after they have 100,000 miles or it's 75% of the capital asset depreciation, they need to be replaced. Well, I think they need to adopt the same practice that families do, and I know that businesses do. Make the vehicle last, live with the 4.4 million. Citizens can't buy new cars, they shouldn't be taxed so that you can buy new vehicles for the city. The city shouldn't be living better than the residents that they serve. That is something that needs to be fixed. Then though, I know many people work, you have to ask yourself, over the last seven years, has your employer, whether it's just, whether you're in the military, you're a civil servant, a small business, a big business, has your employer absorbed the employee's share of tax incre, of the price of the increase in your health insurance? I suspect not. But the city manager is asking the taxpayers to underwrite $2.5 million of additional money so that the employees for the seventh year in a row, the seventh year in a row can hold their employee health premiums flat. It would be nice if the city manager was recommending major tax relief for citizens and we had share sacrifice, I'd be all on board. But what we have is preying on the people who provide the money and insulating other people from having to feel that reality that the mayor falsely said the city is experiencing. It's the residents that are experiencing that reality, not the city. Now, it's interesting, you think that public safety is the first responsibility of government. So how could you have, other than paying debt service? So how is it that if we need 30 additional firefighters or whatever we might need, that that's the last thing that we fund? So we have to raise taxes to fund something that's public safety? No, public safety gets funded and there's something else that's less important than public safety that we're, that he's retaining in the base and then telling us, well, if we want the first and foremost priority of the government to be paid for, we have to pay higher taxes. That's a false choice. It's the wrong choice and it shows you the poor thinking and the culture. This is like a, kind of like an addict. You know, an addict always has to have more. Just another bigger, higher dosage fix and they'll use any rationalization to justify it, independent of the consequences. But tax increases have a consequence, especially to people who are living on the edge and are even going further into debt just to survive. No, there's something else that needs to be deleted if we truly need to hire 30 more firefighters and it's not a tax increase, especially not in today's environment. Now, the Parks After Dark Program probably is a good program. The question is, it provides food trucks, free meals, movies and stuff in underprivileged neighborhoods. But if it's so important, then the Parks and Recreation Department should be having offsets within their department, existing base saying, this is more important. We shouldn't be asking taxpayers to pay in this environment for a new thing. And why aren't we using nonprofit organizations and volunteers versus hiring additional full-time employees or part-time employees where your fringe benefit rate is almost 37% and you have all these other costs? Let's get the program delivered, but let's get it delivered through NGOs and volunteers and cut out the labor bill. We don't need to increase the size of the city bureaucracy. So there's lots of choices here. Now, they also talk about 3% raise, which is good. I mean, that's a step increase, but instead of a step increase, they want to increase the whole scale 3%. And the reason they want to do that, and I'm going to read this by doing this, by increasing the pay scale itself across the board 3% versus moving people across the base pay plan 3%. They will expand the individual's long-term earning potential. Well, I think that's great. But where is the concern for the taxpayers for increasing their long-term potential to acquire wealth because we're adopting the revenue neutral tax rate on real estate of 92.47 cents and not an increase up to 97 cents? Where is the interest in the taxpayer force? Great, great, you know, but to me, this is like, we're pandering to one group, but someone else is paying for it and you're not being even handed about sacrifice. This, this, this budget is intellectually dishonest. I guess that's a nice characterization of this, this thing. Now, another thing that's in here that makes it sound like it's good, but also is not fully explained. Many people are, work for employers today in the private sector and you're going to identify with this is, you get to carry over your, they, basically, most companies have merged annual leave and sick leave into just call it the personal leave. And whether it's three weeks, four weeks, whatever it is. And you can't carry it over from one period to another because they don't want to have these outstanding liabilities. They make you take it or they pay you for it, but they don't want to have an accrued liability. And if you look at the bond prospectus from Virginia Beach, they have to identify what the liability is for leave that has accrued, but has not been taken. Because ultimately, that's something the city has to pay for. So a time back to recognize the new retirement system and whatnot. The new employees have, after a certain date, are on a different type of pension system. They're on a different type of leave accrual system. And so now the city says, oh, we really want to change the accrual leave and put all our employees on the legacy system, but it's budget neutral. But it's not. Because one system allowed people to carry a maximum of 296, which is still more than what military can take, 30 days, counting weekends. Civil service is 240, and even that's, you know, not the industry standard. But when these people carry these leave balances over and pay raises go up, there's a, basically the cost of all that accrued leave goes up. And so this in effect does have a budget implication, otherwise it wouldn't be in our bond prospectus. So they're, and they're not, they don't show the differences between the legacy system and then, and this system and the change. So there's no transparency and to say it's budget neutral, it's only budget neutral in the period of the budget because you're paying the people. But the amount of time of non-productive work can go up or accrues into the debt that you owe later when they leave. And so there is a financial implication. And so it does, this says here, does not create a monetary need for the budget. Not in this budget, but it does create in the long run, a liability which is reflected in our bond prospectus. Now, maybe they're ignorant of that. I'd like to hope that they're not, but certainly it's not full disclosure. Now, this budget has a net in, remember, we have like over 7, 7,500 or so employees in this budget. This budget has a net increase of 95.14 positions, what they call full-time equivalents. That's a value of $9 million. Now, it's never mentioned in this particular budget, in this document, how many positions are empty on any given pay period. But in the five-year forecast that was delivered to the city council in November of last year, just before Thanksgiving, that document reflects that controlling for the pandemic bump, that on average historically, 700 positions in the city are vacant on any given pay period. That's a lot of money. That's over almost $55 million. So clearly, they have room to think about priority. But I believe we should be holding the numbers of FTEs constant and any growth is offset by a decrease somewhere else. And just like families are having to make hard choices, we expect the city council to make hard choices. And there are certainly services that probably that we could think that could be cut or reduced to make that work. Now, I think they got, now, they're worth noting that they're doing 34 FTE increases to be paid for by billing people, now will be billed when they get rescue services. And that, obviously, they're doing that such that whatever your insurance company pays for hospital services is a payment they will accept and that people that can't afford to pay will not be charged. So it'll be interesting to see how that works in terms of matching that all up. But I think we probably ought to see how that works out. But even still, increase in FTEs, what can we, where's the offset? So we can have no growth in overall FTEs? And, and are there savings in terms of, or increase in our coverage? Can we reduce the amount of fire trucks that have to be used for ambulances? When we, that mileage would be better used for other services. Now, here's one that should really, they're, they're doubling the short-term rental fee. You know, the annual fee. And I'm thinking of all the revenues that those short-term revenues are going into the tip fund. We ought to really say, well, why aren't we using the, since we let the people at the oceanfront benefit highly from the tip funds, why aren't we rebating and using the revenues that they generate on those lodging taxes to cover those costs? And why is there even any fee? We don't charge hotels a fee. You know, so I think the fee itself needs to be eliminated and they need to cover that out of the lodging costs collected on short-term rentals. That's just, once again, don't look inward at what you can do. Just build on, I, you know, the example I use is, you know, in, in nature, a pearl gets more beautiful and bigger each year as the accretion, the calcium deposit gets more polished. Well, the city budget gets kind of uglier each year because it just grows at the expense of lowering people's standard of living. So it gets bigger and bigger as people's household wealth and income just gets preyed on. So it's not the, it's certainly not a pearl. So then, here is one that I have a personal ventures, I must have appeared, I don't know, 20-plus places and talked about the stormwater bond referendum in November of 2021. When we built that bond referendum cost and said what it would cost, we didn't, we built it on a 20-year life cycle, total life cycle cost. Meaning the debt service cost, the operations cost, the maintenance cost, and the midlife renovation cost. We made assumptions as to how much we thought the real estate tax base would grow each year. We also made assumptions about what would be the upper limit of borrowing cost that we thought. I think 4.5 was the max we thought we would pay and we've never come close to paying that yet, but we might in the future. And also, a certain amount of inflation each year in the cost of what we thought the estimates of the projects were from a material and contracting out basis. So, but now, so remember, all that, life cycle maintenance. So now we're being told that the stormwater management fee needs to go up 8.9%. And I'll come back, oh, this is important. When we asked the public if they said yes to approving the $567.5 million bond referendum, they would freeze the stormwater management fee for five years. Now, this, this document acknowledges that fact, but they try to blow that away like, oh, well, I know we, we made that promise, but things have happened. Well, let's just listen to the things that they say have happened. Well, they're saying because they have 11 new pumping stations, all the things that we're building with the bond referendum, they're citing as a justification of costs that they need to offset and the only way to do that is to increase the fee. Well, no, because those costs were included in the original estimate for the cost of the bond referendum. Now, if they come out, which they haven't, and shown, here's the assumptions that we made, the baseline pricing assumptions. Here's the ones that have proven correct, here's the ones that haven't, and here's this difference that's due to pricing, not changing requirement, then how should that be funded? Not by increasing that fee. It should be funded the same way that we funded the bond referendum itself. If we needed to be, it would be through real estate taxes. And so, but we're not doing that because they do, they want to keep this fee alive. This fee should go away. Think about a fee. A fee is like, you have a fee on your water. You use water, you pay for what you use. Now, trash is a little different, you can put out six cans or one can, but you are using and consuming something that you generate. Your sewage bill, something you're generating, you're used. Stormwater, whether your lot's 100% covered with concrete, almost like at the north end, or you've got a two-acre place that drains into your own lake that you privately own or a parking lot. No one is being, paying a fee because what? You can't measure the stormwater that you deliver. The only reason why we had a fee is because they like to finance debt with revenue bonds so it doesn't count in the same way against the charter limitations about general obligation debt. It's the wrong thing, it's not a fee, the fee needs to go away. And this is a backboard, but this is not only deceptive, this is dishonest and they know this is a false narrative. And I've shared that with Stacy Cummings, but the documentation is there. This is a false narrative. This, they should keep their promise and they should be honest about how that bond referendum was priced. It's bait and switch is being kind. Now, what they don't talk about here is very clearly is identifying what is the ending fund balance for the city and schools? Meaning what they're forecasting of what was appropriated this year for the budgets of schools and cities that won't be spent? And what revenues overperform such that they have revenues coming in that weren't appropriated? Those two things, they don't, they don't call it surplus, they don't call it overtaxation, they call it fund balance. Well, anyway, it means you have less funds to balance at home because they're taking more than what they need. But now here's an example about where a saving. So he mentions on page 12 that the city risk management fund, because of how well the city's managing their risk and whatnot, this is great, that there's a savings to the general fund of nearly $3 million. Are they showing at least even half of that coming back to you? No, they're spending all of that plus they're raising taxes. So once again, you can see that the financial plight of citizens and the need for tax relief takes a backseat and isn't even a priority, isn't even in their decision calculus. Now, so once again, citizens are reducing their, will have to reduce their personal standard of living because we're getting the wrong answers with regards to cutting back, setting disciplined priorities and living with, the city living within our means. Now, this is the kind of thing you're hearing about is, sometimes we wonder, I know people in Centerville talk about, well, why can't we get a rec center, why can't we get a police precinct, why can't we get a library, all these things, legitimate issues. But on page 13, there's two things which are insightful. First, it states, quote, "Due to the large bond issuance in our near future related to the flood protection program, debt metrics, which is how much we can borrow per capita, what percentage of the operating budget on, the debt metrics around year five of the CIP, which is the last year of the CIP, are on the higher end of the thresholds." Meaning that the city's ability to borrow within its metrics and not draw the attention of Wall Street and bond ragers to lower our bond rating, they're being constrained on their ability to borrow. Not necessarily a bad thing in my opinion, as long as we're borrowing for the right stuff. And that's why the next part is important. Only increased use of bonds are related, the only increase of the use of bonds in the CIP are related to the Pembroke redevelopment agreement. Now, they never say in here, this is $24 million at this particular park for a parking garage to enable a hotel and apartments, private development. And they're getting to use rebated property taxes on those improvements. Get their taxes back. And the, and the delta will be filled in with the special service district fee on the people in that area. So we have public needs, like a, maybe a new training center for our police, which we badly need. But because of, only thing we could afford to do is because we made a choice, or council made a choice to spend our, our most scarce resource, which is borrowing capacity, on private development that will yield no net real estate income to the unrestricted general fund for the life of the bonds, 20 years. We don't have that debt service. So this just shows you, but no one talks about that when they vote for it. But now here, the manager's telling us, oh, but the only thing we can increase debt for was this because we're up against the edge of our debt metrics. Interesting. Anyway, that just goes on and on and on. Now, he also talks about that we have this traffic safety improvement project. And these are revenues that will come from the speed cameras. Now, if, this is all about safety. And it says, "The annual contribution increase is made possible through the implementation of speed enforcement cameras." So I don't, it's, but it's not clear that all $4 million are being used for the traffic improvement projects. But the question is, in the short one, if we were really having a tight time. But as Tim Anderson would say is, let's make sure that we're doing public safety improvements that make really a difference. But, but not, and why aren't we just paying for those speed cameras ourselves, using, basically generating a profit for a private party? So that's something we need to watch. I don't necessarily have, I understand why we want speed cameras, but if speed cameras become like Washington DC as a revenue mechanism and, and we're not really seeing a material change in, in safety and true, true metrics, then we maybe need to abandon that, but that's something we should take a look at. Now, this gets to the boat tax. Now, I was happy to hear that my good friends, council member Stacy said he was against increasing the boat tax. I know why we took the boat tax off in the start place. Wealthy people move their boats, whether it's the Portsmouth or up further on the York River someplace, or the bigger boats to Florida. But it really does, it hits, impacts all our local marinas who don't get any winter work. So when we think we're getting money for this, the city allegedly, it becomes a tax, I would call it, on, on the working households of our city to keep their boat on a trailer at their home or whatever. And this is $4 million a year. Well, that's really costing the community 8 million, but if you go back in years when we took it off, there was a lot more than 4 million it was costing us in terms of revenues to our businesses and marinas who work on boats. So this just shows you that people don't understand that taxes aren't free. But you don't hear any history analysis in this executive summary, why we removed it to start with. At least they could be honest enough to share with the voters why council removed that boat tax to start with. And why is that analysis no longer relevant? Once again, intellectually dishonest. Now, school. That'll be a whole nother, I think I'll do another thing on schools because that's over half the budget, and it deserves its own thing. But I do want to mention one particular piece. Thanks to the General Assembly, and hopefully when the government assigns the budget, the General Assembly is going to, the budget will now provide $10.9 million of money to fund positions, non-instructional support positions to the tune of $10.9 million that were, in the current budget, 100% funded with local tax dollars. So to me, that sounds like, ooh, that's $10 million I can instantly get back. But oh no, the city manager says, oh, I'm putting this off the side because we'll have to see how the school board wants to spend it. Well, that's 1.31 cents of real estate tax relief right there, not me gonna, so. Once again, you get money for a bill that you had, and the first thing you say is, oh, let's not give money back to taxpayers. Oh, that would be so wrong. Let's see how, how the school board wants this. Believe me, bureaucrats can always find money to spend money. And unfortunately, people need that money at home. Once again, it represents the thought process of this budget is really indifferent, which is probably the worst thing to say, indifferent to the financial plight of citizens and small businesses. It's just crazy. Uh, and then, okay, let's go on. Then they talk about, they want to go and talk about how the demand for services and articulated needs far exceed revenue projections. Well, what family can't have more requirements than they have money? I mean, I did, I worked for him for 42 years, even with a $22 billion budget. There's always more requirements than there's money. But also, I also know is when you want something, we always said, where's your offset? At home, since you can't go and get more money from your employer, and this budget's going up, if you think about, uh, this budget's up 4.89%, something like that, if I, close in that nature, is think about what, how big, you have to get like about a 5 point something percent raise when you factor in your, what the state tax you pay, and what your FICA tax is, and what your federal effective tax rate might be. You know, you gotta make, did you get that kind of pay raise last year? If you didn't, or this year, social security pensioner, 2.3%? That's half of the increase that this budget's going up. So what has to happen? You have to cut. You have to do without. And do any of us think that the purpose of government is really to impoverish us? I don't care how good their services are. If you can't afford it, you can't afford it. You gotta say, you gotta come down to what I can afford to pay you. Let's work that out. But the manager, he's apparently not capable of that, or the signal he's getting behind the scenes tells him, tax, tax, tax. So, and demand is not independent of price. People might say, I love ice cream. Do you love ice cream for $10 a cone? Uh, no. I'll never forget, I was watching on TV, one of these Warren Buffett annual budget conventions, and the guy who was the director, president, or VP for Dairy Queen, which is owned by Berkshire Hathaway. And he was talking about the economy, and he says, "At some price, a soft serve won't sell no matter how much people like it because they can't afford it." And that's where we are. I don't care, we got lots of City of James Craig places, but it's gotten where the most people can't afford it because guess what? They're working two jobs, maybe three jobs. They never have time to enjoy any of the stuff allegedly they're paying for because they're either working, they're too tired, or they're taking care of elderly parents, they're getting their, their, their cash flow broke. And that, and the city council, this budget does not, it's so indifferent to the suffering and the financial stress that families are under, it is just shameful. I don't know how else to, to say, what you could say about that. Uh, speaks for itself, and I don't, and I shouldn't be telling anybody anything they don't already know. Uh, insurance cost, I've heard, you can go to next door and see people talk about their 25% increase in the cost of their insurance, or their assessment went up 15%, not that 5.9% average, or you just, you just name it. Um, so let's go tax and fees. I talked a little bit about that. The water rate's going up 8.5%. I think that some of that is just fixed cost. But once again, knowing that the water rate is what we get charged by Norfolk Department, the city council should be looking for the things that they can't change. How do they offset that tax? That fee increase by reducing something else in the operating budget. Where are we looking to maximize the wealth of the resident rather than to maximize the spending of the city? That, it's just, the culture is just, it's, 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 it's working against, and it should be worked. I often said is, the city council is supposed to be the firewall between the insatiable appetite of government, and it's the citizen's pocketbook, but that's not the case. But let me just, uh, talk about water and sewer because people talk about these rates. Now, public utilities is supposed to be, is an enterprise fund, and they're supposed to be capturing depreciation expense, operations, and all those things in the rate. So why is the fee increase being tied to rising personnel costs? Well, why don't you tell us how much the pay raise is causing our rate to go up? Why don't you put that dollar figure actually in the executive summary so people know? Water replacement program, water meter. Well, if you're doing depreciation and that's built into the rate, you should already have a capital account so that when it comes time to replace meters, that's not driving rate structure. So, so what's going on there? Where's, who's asking the questions? Why is the manager asking the questions? Because he signed this thing. Um, new metering technology. Well, okay, well, where, isn't that something we should have a capital fund? Is there a reason why we're not using the capital fund that we've been doing to do that, or how does that look, freight charge? Once again, look at the surplus. A good example of this is the TIF, the TIF Fund for Town Center has a $19 million surplus. Right? So when Sandbridge, for years when it had a TIF, year after year after year, that Sandbridge had a huge surplus. And what did the city do? It harvested, oh, $9 million, the city and the schools both benefited from this every year after year after year after year after year. Finally, they just did away with the TIF. We've never harvested the first dollar out of the Town Center TIF. So why aren't we using some of that Town Center surplus to fund some of these capital expenditures that he says he's raising taxes to do? Or, or can't reduce taxes because he has to use real estate taxes to pay for. But what he could do and did recommend is that a million dollars of that money should be used to prevent the Town Center Special Service District to have to not increase their rate so much. Now, imagine this, you're at home, and let's just say your house was a special service district. Right? So now you're saying, gosh, I'm paying, I'm paying an extra 45 cents on top of my real estate taxes to pay for something. And I think, oh my gosh, but my house didn't go up enough. So my bill to cover all those costs, I need to pay 55 cents, not 45. But I don't want to pay 45 cents. I want the city to say, take a portion of my real estate taxes that would go to the, that would go to a fund, and, and use that. So something I'm not entitled to, it's a subsidy, I'm not making you pay your real cost. I'm reducing the, but that's what's happening with the Town Center, a million dollars. Well, where's the million dollars? If they can do that million dollars, how about a couple more million dollars for the actual citizens who get no benefit? And, and help us get towards our real estate tax rate? This is a double standard, and you don't see anybody bragging about that in any public, the manager, the budget director, kind of, they didn't go through and talk about the inequality, this special consideration treatment that one place is getting. Now, maybe, maybe, or maybe not, it might be motivated by the fact that there's a council member who has a business in the Town Center, and maybe that would affect his, uh, cost. Who knows? So, so yeah, when you go back and look, we're increasing the real estate tax rate from 92.47 cents to 97 cents. That's a tax increase. You'll see a public notice in the paper. They have to hold a special hearing. I think it's on April 22nd at the Tuesday council meeting, that would be right, I think it's seven, I think that's close. Um, at the Tuesday council meeting at 6:00 PM. And that little advertisement will put all that in there. Because what you have in this document, the manager tries to tell us that they reduced the real estate tax rate in this document, for the current year, they reduced the rate. They did not reduce the rate by law, they just increased it less. Once again, they know the truth. They misrepresent the truth, to be kind, actually, it's a lie. And when you call them on it, they have to acknowledge that you're right. I like the fact that Stacy Cummings has that picture of that tax increase noticing his phone. So at least he's one person who is intellectually honest and doesn't commit fraud by trying to tell people they got a tax decrease when they got an increase. It's just ridiculous. And as long as your bill is bigger next year than it is this year, you got a tax increase. So let's not be trying to fool anyone. And the meal tax, I think is the first time, maybe the Restaurant Association, I don't agree, but that is unnecessary. But here are the current surpluses, ending balances in the agricultural reserve program is carrying a $23.4 million surplus. The open space, 19.7. And the Town Center TIF, 19.6. This is on page 23. Now, li- listen to these words, and I quote, "Since it's the establishment, the ARP pro fund balance has grown nearly 300% of the expected annual revenue. It is expected that with the reduction, this ARP will still be able to achieve the goal of the estimated 300 acres." So he's harvesting some money, which is a good thing. But these, once again, most people have no idea of these balances, but he didn't harvest any of the balance out of the TIF fund, which is 119% of the expected annual revenue. They've just moved a million dollars to help them cover their special service district obligations. So I guess all you people who are getting dredging and paying a special service district fee, if that's creating a hardship, you should expect the city to kind of like, where's, where's my, where's my tax relief? Where's my, uh, help me offset that cost? Don't hold your breath. Uh, and this is one where once again, they provide no methodology. They're claiming that 40%, this is part of the justification of a tax increase, rather than saying, let's reduce the meal tax and grow revenue, very good idea. They're the, let's increase the rate and hope we don't impact revenue. That 40% of the meal tax is generated by out of town residents. It's hard for me to believe that 460,000 residents who live in the city of Virginia Beach 365 days a year are only paying 60% of the meal tax. But they don't provide any footnote, they just make a claim. I think they owe us explanation, but even if it was 10% or 20%, it's, we shouldn't have it. We'll have the second highest meal tax in the United States of America. That tax should be reduced to 10 cents, and let's bet that if we have a competitive advantage, that lowering the tax will generate more revenue, and that is a proven thing versus raising the tax and hurting businesses. Once again, if, I guess if you, if you can confiscate revenue, that always seems to be the solution is to increase a tax. It's just unbelievable. There's more I could say in here. It's, uh, vehicle, I talked about vehicle replacements, this is, they got more details as you go onto page 29. They talk about security. They get state grant fundings, so that's great. But why do we want to increase the number of custodians that are city employees? I worked for the government, federal government. We, we contracted out all our custodial services. Why? Who wants to pay French benefit rates for custodial services? It's a very competitive business. How many office complexes, hey, I think I'll have my own company and I'll do this. No, they, they contract that out. And so the question is, why we want to have, not, people that are working, obviously you want to keep those, but why grow? Why grow that workforce? You should be phasing that out and transitioning that to the private sector. And I'm certainly, they would not have the same 38% French benefit rate that starts the year after next when the cost of VRS goes up another 1.65%. So I don't see any place where people are driving. Where's the restriction on, we're going to cap, reduce by 50% the amount of money spent on studies and consultants? Now, close with this example. The school board spent the year before $15.4 million to design two high schools and a, and a combined middle school, a combined elementary school and partially sixth grade campus that came in with a dollar value that no one could afford, which was known from when they started. I mean, that's, but, is, went, and all we have is paper product, I call it shelfware, and public meetings discussing and designing things that no one can afford, call that vaporware. But that's almost two cents in the tax base that's just, you know, trash can product. Nothing comes of it because, oh, we can't afford that. Really? Wasn't no surprise. Let's roll back. We just got hurt, they just spent $3 million designing something for Atlantic Avenue that obviously wasn't cost constrained because they only had $48 million, but they came back with a design that was 100 million plus. Well, oh, we can't afford that. Well, if you were building a house and you had a price that you could afford, would you have an architect coming back and working on designs that cost more than you had? No, we should have gotten for $3 million, a $48 million answer. But no, now they've canceled that contract, they got their money, the $3 million. You didn't get anything, so once again, you got partial shelfware and some vaporware. But no, no product you can use, and they're going to have another task force to come back with another answer of what they can do for 48 million. Okay. Bad enough, they appropriated $4 million to design a $60 million park at Rudy Loop that no one really wants, that is a low priority, that we cannot afford. We have more better uses. If the TIF fund has that much money available, then the TIF fund should be funding more of the storm water management projects at the oceanfront. Uh, rather than, and something that really helps. And, but, that's it. I suspect that's something that won't happen. And then they spent money on consultants for what kind of election system that we want. And I, a whole bunch of things we're spending consultants for. And city council members just need to go out on their own, hold public hearings, public workshops, and hear directly from residents, and they don't need a consultant to filter it out. So if they really are interested in what you have to think about the budget, it wouldn't be at 6 o'clock at the convention, so the furthest distance for most people to travel on a weeknight when people have to get home from work first and drive in traffic, take care of their kids, you can go find a sitter, they're not, of course, you can call in from home. So this is important. If you want to speak at the public hearing, you can call 757-385-4303. That's the city clerk's phone number, and tell them you want to speak remotely. And after all the people who speak in public, they will go through a list, and people can speak from home, so you don't have to travel. But it certainly could be held at a more convenient place. But what I really wanted to impart to you, since most of you don't have time, is to see the culture, to see the thought process. And that you aren't in that thought process, you aren't in that concern process. No one is looking out for what these tax increases mean to you in terms of the financial stress it imposes, or that even acknowledging that you will be required to make additional sacrifices and why that's important. There, that is the biggest offense. I, I am very disappointed for a person who, I was very excited when we, I voted to hire him. Uh, I would like to thank that six votes, or however he sees it. But the lack of even an acknowledgement of the financial health of beach families and small businesses. And that their answer is, oh, the mayor, we're experiencing reality, the confrontation with reality. No. This is, let's pray, let's pray, not like in church, that P-R-E-Y, pray, like a carnivore. Pray on the wealth and income of our residents for a budget that is far from lean, far from having sacrifices equal to. I'm not saying that we aren't going to maybe miss some things, but there's some things we can miss and do that are less arduous than what we're asking families and have been asking families to put up with over the last at least three budget cycles. So if you don't speak up, these people, silence is consent. But at least now, you can go look at this, at this document, watch this, watch this tape as you go through it, and read it for yourself, draw your own conclusions. These are mine. They're premised on 17 years of serving on the city council, produced numerous budgets that didn't raise taxes, and bringing a perspective and sharing an insight that is not- that is not in what in many cases is a very false and deceptive narrative in this executive summary. Thank you all for watching.
YouTube on your?
This is going to be on my Facebook, John Moss, his Facebook is personal Facebook, because it's a personal comment. And I have a YouTube as well. It's at John Moss, I believe is what it is on YouTube.
And they can get it from your email.
Oh, if you email me, I'll send it to you. It's john d moss four one oh nine at gmail dot com. John D Moss four one oh nine at gmail dot com. I post a lot of stuff, as many of you know, on Facebook about the budget because I realize that most people do not have the time to, to look at these things. But I think, uh, when you see what's happened at the national level and the state level in terms of recognizing the need for tax relief, why are we the exception? Why? I think it's because they think they can get away with it. But you all need to speak up, speak up loudly, call and let them know, show up, call in. But it's your money on the table. If you want to send me a text, I won't, I don't answer all these calls, but if you want to send me a text, I'll, I will respond to those. Seven five seven six three six one five three four. That's seven five seven six three six one five three four. I'm not running for any office, not seeking any office. I'm just wanting to share an expertise that I have so that citizens who don't have the time can be better informed and might be motivated to take a look at this executive summary relative to their personal experience with reality versus the mayors and see whether or not they think this, this budget is a fair shake. Thank you so much.